Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our Planning Board meeting, March 20. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do we have any declarations of conflicts today? Okay, seeing none. Can I have approval of the agenda?
Still move.
Okay, moved by Sin, seconded by Councilor Beck. All those in favor? And just so, FYI, folks, we have Jackie is on the online today, and Rosemary sends her regrets. Okay, adoption of the minutes from March 13. To kind of get somebody to move that. Yep, moved by Councilor McCabe, seconded by Sin. All those in favor? Great. And Jackie, you're good with the adoption of the minutes?
Yep, in favor, thank you.
Thank you. Any business arising from these minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right on to our reports. And our first one is being presented by Brandon, and it's 35, I don't know if it's Hebert or Hebert Street, PID 1083245. Over to you, Brandon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the first presentation here today is for 3 to 5 Herbert Street, PID 1083245, and it's for a rear yard setback. So this property is located at the intersection of Herbert Street and Norwood Road. Its surrounding uses include low-density residential, so single and semi-detached dwellings, as well as open space. The request here is to reduce the required rear yard setback from 7.5 meters or 24.6 feet to approximately 5.76 meters, 18.9 feet, in order to allow a subdivision of the existing semi-detached dwelling. All other low-density residential or R2 zone requirements are met with this property, and in response to the city's notification letter, the Planning Heritage Department did not receive any comments regarding the proposed major variance. So the reason this major variance comes to light is because, as it exists, the buildings don't need a variance. It's when the subdivision happens down the middle, that corner lot, the yard switch. So this 5.76, as it stands right now, is the side yard for the building. When this property line comes into effect, that now becomes the rear yard, as this is the front. So that's why the yard switch and a variance is needed. So lot 1-1, existing side yard becomes the rear yard. Lot 1-2, existing side yard also becomes the rear yard, and both are deficient. In conclusion, the Planning Heritage Department encourages the Planning Board to recommend a council to approve the following major variance at 3 to 5 Herbert Street, and this variance is to reduce the rear yard setback from 7.5 meters or 24.6 feet to approximately 5.76 meters, 18.9 feet, in order to allow a subdivision of the existing semi-detached dwelling. Thank you.
Thanks, Brandon. So in, just in everyday language, basically, it's a duplex that used to be all owned by one person, and now they're splitting it so that one owner for one side of the duplex and one for the other. Is that the idea?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. All right. That's a lot of language for something like that, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, any questions from the Planning Board? I don't believe the applicant is here with us today, but if you have any questions, I'm sure the Planning Board can clarify them. Do you have a question, Sin? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just wondering, Brandon, if there is a, you know, talk with the Planning Department to kind of, you know, make this as of right, like, you know, these sort of applications, you know, when you divide, you know, you have a subdivision, you know, just making, you know, making some changes in the planning bylaw, the planning official part and the bylaws, so that...
I missed the question. What was that question?
The question, Madam Chair, was like, you know, if there is a talk about making this as of right, so that this sort of application doesn't come to Planning Board, whether these are easy applications, you know, allow people as of right to do it, or maybe have some sort of changes in the official plan and the bylaw.
Yeah, so definitely, as we move forward with the official plan rewrite and the changes zoning and development bylaw, certainly could be something that could turn into as of right, but unfortunately, right now, we are stuck with what we have. Yeah, unless there's something else you wanted to add, Brandon or David.
Through the chair, Sin, I was going to just say that our zoning bylaw doesn't allow flexibility to interchange the side yard and rear yard requirements, and some zoning bylaws, that's a mechanism that you could apply such that you could arrive at an as-of-right situation. Unfortunately, our current bylaw doesn't have that. However, not to say that through our bylaw review that that may come to pass in the near future, that applications like this might not be having to put through, put through review of the Planning Board, so, yeah. But currently, we were compelled to bring it to the board, so.
Thank you for that. Councilor Beck?
Yeah, I just have a, I'm trying to understand why this is happening in the first place, I guess, because I've never heard of, I've never seen a proposal come from this where we're splitting a duplex into two. Is this someone who, or is this, is the idea, I guess, on this, is that, is there someone, is the person that owns this living there right now, or is this someone, is this a total rental property, and they're looking to ultimately sell them, or?
I believe one of the sides is for sale, and a closing date is pending, but they can't close off on one side because they're only selling one side until this variance has been approved.
But you can even sell one side, even though it's...
Pardon me?
You can sell one side even though it hasn't been subdivided?
You can't until it's been, until it's been approved.
Right.
So therefore, they can't, they can't do a closing on this until Planning Board and Council say yes or no to this variance. So if it's no, then they can't proceed with the sale of the, of one side of the duplex. If everyone says yes, then they can sell one side of the duplex. Is that correct?
Yeah. So a lot of times, especially these newer semi-detached, when they're built, they're usually subdivided pretty much when they're completed, and the idea is you sell one half and sell the other half. This one, when it was built, I think it was four or five years ago, I assume there was no intention to sell both sides, so they probably rented them out, but now they want to sell them to new owners, and that's why it's being subdivided now, so.
Okay, so they'll end up being two separate kids. Okay, all righty. This is kind of similar to the other 480, 482 Queen, in some regards, I guess, where they're going to be four individual, or recommended to be four individual, the other one that we have on the agenda here today. Okay.
Same idea.
All right, thanks.
Yep, same idea.
Yeah, it's just where this is a corner lot, and so is the Queen Street one, when you subdivide it, the closest lot to the corner has different yards, so there's like the flange yard, the rear yard, and whatnot. As of the way it is right now, those yards, the yards are different now than when they're subdivided, is the easiest way to put it. So it's legal now, it's just when you add that new property line, they switch. Yeah.
Does anyone else have any question? Oh, go ahead, Councilor McCabe.
Not a question. I'm just, I represent this area, and I think it's really just more principle here, so I'm going to support staff recommendation and suggest we move this on to Council for approval.
Okay, so that being said, if no one else has any questions, the Planning Heritage Department does encourage the Planning Board to recommend to Council to approve the following major variance at 35 Herbert Street. And so, do I have somebody, yeah, you'll second it. Councilor McCabe has moved the motion. It has been seconded by Bobby. So the resolution is on the floor. Does anyone have any questions on the resolution? If not, if not, we can call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Jackie, are you in favor?
I'm in favor, thank you.
Okay, so that's unanimous. Thank you very much, folks. Okay, we can move on to our next application, which is 14 Oak Drive. Again, Brandon is our planner who will be presenting this report, and we do have a few people here that will speak to this once the report is completed. So thank you.
Thank you again. I'd like to note that some of the letters that we received were after the package was published, so we received them on Monday and Tuesday, and therefore they weren't in the original package. Jason distributed those amongst you all, and there was also one letter that was formatted incorrectly, which the nearby residents brought a properly-formatted version, which you should also be able to find on your desk. So this is also a major variance for a subdivision. This one is for lot frontage at 14 Oak Drive, PID 390401. So the property in question is located along Oak Drive. Surrounding this property, the uses include single-detached dwellings, semi-detached dwellings, and townhouse dwellings. The subject property is approximately 1.98 acres of vacant land and has access points on both Mount Edward Road and Oak Drive. For our purposes, we are only concerned with the outlined black parcel right here, which is the proposed subdivision. This is what will be remaining of it, should it be approved. So the variance request here is to reduce the minimum lot frontage from 18 meters or 59.1 feet to approximately 6.09 meters or 20 feet in order to construct a single-detached dwelling on the new parcel. This variance is possible through Section 48.12.3 of the zoning and development bylaw, which states that a frontage variance shall be applied to existing legal lots with less than 25 feet of frontage. In response to the city's notification process, the Planning Heritage Department received seven letters regarding the proposed variance. These were classified as four being in opposition, two letters in support, and one letter that was neutral. So to summarize, the negative points that were raised by nearby property owners, some of these concerns included driveway location, which included the road access and snow removal, the servicing to the lot, so water, sewer, any of those services and utilities, privacy concerns of the dwelling due to it being located behind the adjacent lots, as well as lot drainage and potential tree removal when the new house is potentially built. Positive points that were raised by nearby property owners included increasing the housing stock and a single-detached dwelling that reflects the surrounding neighborhood, and on a neutral point, the, some of the questions raised were the effect on future subdivisions, the uniqueness of flag lots, and the lot servicing to these type of lots. So when evaluating this lot and this request for a major variance, there's a few things to keep in mind. The first is that we already received public works, as well as water and sewer, have given preliminary approval to construct the driveway with Oak Drive access. Oak Drive was the more preferred option due to Mount Edward Road having more traffic than Oak Drive. Some of the questions raised about flag lots and their uniqueness, it's not the first of its kind in Charlestown. There are others in the area. They are rare, but there are others. Adjacent at 27 McMillan Crescent, that has the characteristics of a flag lot. And additionally, to the west, at the end of Oak Drive, there's another flag lot at 129 to 131 Oak Drive. And additionally, it is important to keep in mind that any development on this lot would be subject to the R1L zoning regulations, as well as proper lot drainage and municipal When considering the official plan objectives, looking at Section 3.2, there are a handful of things to point out. So our objective is to contain urban sprawl by introducing a staging strategy for new development and to ensure that there is concurrency between proposals for new development and the provision of underground municipal services. Moreover, our policy should be, shall be, to direct urban growth to land that is a logical extension of an existing urban area or neighborhood and will be serviced by municipal water and wastewater systems. Additionally, our objective is to promote compact urban form and infill development, as well as the efficient use of infrastructure and public service facilities. Our policy shall be to encourage infill development through public lands, assembly initiatives, flexible zoning provisions, the reduction or waiver of development fees for small or regularly shaped lots when warranted, and the use of tax incentives when fully serviced areas of the city. And lastly, our policy shall be to use existing underground services to their fullest practical capacity before public funds are used to extend new water and wastewater lines into areas that are essentially undeveloped. So the subdivision and subsequent development of a single-detached dwelling would create infill development on a vacant lot while utilizing existing municipal services. It is also important to note that through Section 6.2.1 of the zoning development bylaw, a single-detached dwelling shall be permitted to be constructed on any undersized lot regarding lot, regarding lot frontage. In the event that this subdivision was rejected, a single-detached dwelling, as per Section 6.2.1, would still be permitted to be constructed on the existing In conclusion, the Planning Heritage Department encourages the Planning Board to recommend to Council that the following major variance for subject property, for the subject property located at 14 Oak Drive, PID 390401, be approved, this being to reduce the required minimum lot frontage from 18 meters, 59.1 feet, to approximately 6.09 meters, 20 feet, to allow a semi-detached dwelling to be constructed on the subject property. And thank you.
Thanks for that, Brandon. Before I open it up to Planning Board, I know we have Nicole Peters here. I think she's the only one here that wanted to speak to the application.
I would speak while...
Okay, sure, yes. Does someone want to give Nicole a microphone? Probably one of the microphones over here. Just, just because it's being livestreamed, they won't hear you without, yep.
Thank you. So thank you for letting me speak.
And if you don't mind just stating your name for the record, that would be great.
Not a problem. So my name is Andrea Nicole Peters. I go by Nicole Peters. I am one of the current owners at 12 Oak Drive, the house that is the most affected by this variance application. I did recirculate my letter. It was formatted incorrectly in the minutes, or in the planning package, sorry, and also, when I submitted the letter, there was a copy of the deed that was not submitted at the time either. It was all submitted on time, March 14, to the Planning Department. Okay, so I have made several points in my letter that was sent to the Planning Board on March 14, which I hope you will take into consideration. However, I would like to focus on one main point at this time. It's by lot number 48.12.3. The consideration will be given to permitting a flag lot through a frontage variance application. In those circumstances where an existing legal lot was created with less than 25 foot, feet of frontage, or in circumstances where a parcel is landlocked and there will never be the ability for the extension of a future road network to provide the required street frontage from the rear of the property. So the rest of it, I, I'm sure you can all read it, but that's the main part right there. So the deed I have passed around clearly shows that there is the ability for an extension of a future street/road network. I highlighted it on page two. Also, once this main parcel is subdivided, it is no longer an existing lot. So both of the requirements for consideration have not been met under 48.12.3. My objection is to all of the requirements and regulations that are being ignored in the above bylaw should this application be approved. To be clear, I am not against housing being built on the property. I agree that this is prime real estate for housing. My issue is that there is the ability for a public street to be built off of McMillan Crescent, which has not been mentioned in the planning package at all, and a public street would allow for proper drainage, would not require several major variances, and would be more accessible for emergency vehicles, snow removal, and wastewater services. The appearance would also be more suited to the neighborhood rather than having a house in another backyard without road frontage. I understand that this would be a huge undertaking by the property owner. However, I feel it is the appropriate and legal manner in which to proceed with this land should they wish to subdivide. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I believe we have somebody else from the area that would like to speak. And again, if you just stated your name for the record, that would be great. Thank you.
Did I have to press something? Nope, good to go. I'm Terrance Shawnlund, also from 12 Oak Drive, and I'd like to state that the property owner, being Valda Taylor, is related to Garnet Taylor, who lives right next door, who has the right of way through McMillan, and neither of them want the road to go through their property, but would rather choose to submit many variances to come between our properties. Oh, yes, and the potential property builder is the sister of Garnet, or Nancy Taylor. Is that correct? Yes. That's everything. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for that. I will, maybe before I open it up to the Planning Board, is there, is there any comment that the planning staff can make in regards to what Nicole had mentioned in the deed that she included that shows that there is an area that a road could go through, through Schedule A there?
Jason, would you mind putting the presentation back up? Thanks. All right, thank you. All right. So to our knowledge, the road would come through here, they were speaking on?
That's correct.
So we, even though there is a deed, we are unable to confidently say that a road could be extended through there, as that is not owned by the city. So it's not the city's property, unless we bought it from them. We could not put a road and services through there as of right now. So the next logical idea would be to the two accesses on Oak Drive, so Oak and Mount Edward Road. So you could pick either this little parcel or this little parcel to put the lot. The other point, just let me find it. So this whole property right here that exists, that is, that is the existing legal lot, right here, it has about 20 feet of frontage, right here, I think it's about 15 to 18. You can't combine those to make one frontage of, say, 40, what it would be. So you take one of them. This is less than 25, so that's where we apply, where an existing legal lot was created with less than 25 feet of frontage. So that's why we are able to use 48.12.3, because this was created at one point legally with less than the required frontage. So I think that answers those two questions.
Can you show me on the map where, where the property is from? Can you show me on the map where where the property is from the folks that spoke versus where, like, can you just show me where that driveway is going to go in to access to the back in reference to their property? Just like an understanding.
This property right here.
Okay. And the black is the driveway that they're proposing putting, which is running along the property that you have, versus the other option would be, but you explained it couldn't be another option?
The only other option, sorry for interrupting.
Go ahead.
Would be Mount Edward Road. Because they both have accesses. They're both about the same width, about 20 feet.
Okay. And are they saying that the people that own that other property could access through there because they all are, they all own parts of that property? Is that, was that what, how I, is that how you explain that? Yes, please. Yeah, go up to that.
So I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
So the black is where they're proposing to put the driveway to get to the back of the lot to build.
Correct.
So where's the other option? Because I think you indicated that the other properties were all owned by the same people.
77824 and 61955.
Okay.
So Garnet Taylor owns 77824, Garnet Nancy. And Velda Taylor is owns the big piece of property and that 615955. And Velda Taylor has deeded access for a 66-foot section of Garnet Taylor's property to create a subdivision in the future.
So what you're saying is that you could come in off of McMillan and come around and get onto that proposed lot that way instead of coming in off of Oak?
From my understanding, that is correct, which I feel would be much safer.
Thanks for that clarification. Brandon? What are your thoughts?
Yeah. So this would be possible, say, if they gave this land to the city to build the road. If they never do that, the only two options are right here, Oak Drive and Mount Edward Road, if you were to ever develop anything on that lot. So if they're unwilling to give this to the city to build the road and services, then I don't think that's possible.
And the city would have to want to take the road, too, like, we wouldn't necessarily service, we have lots of little roadways throughout some of these subdivisions that are landlocked that we haven't made into legal conforming roads yet, just for the clarification on that.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Beck. Counselor Beck, and then Bobby Kenny, and then Counselor McCabe.
I guess as an overarching sentiment, I'd love to get gentle infill into our city if we can. I have a lot of questions about this particular area. As much as I see attractive parts to it, there's, I have a lot of questions, I guess, too. I guess my first question is, who owns 390401? Like, how, who's, if we're going to get, if we're talking about accessing this off McMillan Road, like, who owns all that land there?
The Taylors.
Do they own all that?
Yeah.
They own all of that 390401? Okay. So I drove out there and I looked at it to try and get a physical sense of what it is. And is this current, is this a private lane where that, like, the 27 is? You see where it says 27? Is that a private lane that they have to take care of, of servicing, of snow removal, of? So they're all, that's all done privately?
Yeah, it's all on private land there.
Well, if, why wouldn't, if they're selling their land to those people there, why wouldn't the new property owner without intruding on 90, 392415 and 392423, why wouldn't they just extend that in and then make, have them responsible for the same sort of responsibilities that 778241 and 615955 have? I see it as, if those are already, we have an access point, it's not really, not really big, it's not very large, but it's servicing those two properties. They own 390401, and they're selling it off to those people there. I don't know why we would end up inconveniencing those two properties that front on Oak Drive. I think that's an unnecessary intrusion on their property. So if that can be accomplished and they're okay with assuming the same responsibilities that are at 778241 and 615955, go ahead and do that. But I think it's, I think it's causing a, what I would see is an unnecessary disruption onto those properties that are fronting on, when there's another option. But they, so it would just be building on what's already there and then the road, if they decide to deed it over to the city at some point in time and we wanted to construct a road, that'd be another discussion. But for right now, if, I don't, I don't, I see that as quite an intrusion. So I wouldn't be supportive of it.
Thank you for that, Counselor Beck. And also, McMillan Crescent would be such a quieter access point versus Oak Drive as well, I would think. Just my thoughts on that as well. Bobby, Kenny, you wanted to speak.
Thank you, Chair. I was just confused by the strip of land to the northeast of these people's property. It says approximate location of underground water main. Where was that put in there and what purpose does that serve? It would actually be the driveway for the proposed lot.
Okay. Yeah, so there is a water main and water lines that go under the driveway. That's why we contacted Richard McEwen. And he said he doesn't, I'm pretty sure there's also a hydrant right by where the driveway was. He said with the right steps, this would be fine. They would just have to work with the water and sewer department to get that driveway put in properly, but he approved it.
So would there be an easement underneath that driveway per se?
If, if, sorry. If you have.
Okay. I'm not sure of that right now. We wouldn't be able to tell without a full survey where the easements are.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor McCabe. Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I agree with Counselor Beck, actually. I think there's a whole lot of things here and a lot of unknowns to be able to support the application as it sits right now. And so I don't really think I have to duplicate everything he said, but there's just a whole lot of things that really don't make sense and a lot of things that have been pointed out from the residents around the area that I won't be in favor of supporting the application as is.
Thank you for that, Counselor McCabe. Was the option to come in from McMillan on the already existing driveway, was that even explored, Brandon?
So to my knowledge, the access off Oak Drive was always the intention. If you were to have a driveway here and then say you put a lot here, this would all have to be subdivided to create a lane because otherwise it would be a landlocked parcel. So you would have to have some form of access here. So I'm not sure if it was ever explored by the applicant. We took their application and took all the materials and road report. So that's the best I could tell you. To my knowledge, it was all always Oak Drive was their idea.
Okay. So it was their idea to be on Oak Drive, but the option was always there for McMillan Crescent because it's already an existing roadway or lane, and it's their laneway, is it not?
So either way, they would have to subdivide a lane here to get an access to the road. So this parcel here, it would have to have a subdivision here just to create that, and then you would consolidate that lane with whatever you make right here.
And wouldn't they have to do the same thing off of Oak?
Nope. So Oak Drive, you only have the subdivision because here you would be consolidating multiple properties to create a lane, whereas this is already connected to the street.
Oh. I know, it's just a, yeah. Any other questions, folks? Yes, go ahead, Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Brandon, is you meaning that McMillan Drive, the access to McMillan Drive isn't, also, that's really up to the property owner and their relatives, as was mentioned earlier, to deed it to the city? The access from Mount Edward and Oak Drive, you know, Oak Drive, we certainly see that it's infringing with PID 392415 and possibly 392423. But the Mount Edward Road one is, you know, 103. It's still in land conflict with 1038584. You can see the driveway clearly. So, you know, assuming we go ahead with this proposed lot, you know, the subject property would further be subdivided because, you know, the whole point was to have infill development, right? That's one of the point to allow it. Now, for further infill development, I don't see an access. Again, that will again infringe, you know, you would have to have a road, you know, through Mount Edward Road. Am I correct on that?
So if this was approved and you have this lot and this is all that's left, there is a clause in the bylaw that says you cannot subdivide a flag lot more than once. So already, like, without this, this lot is currently a flag lot. So you create this new lot, this can't be subdivided again unless that bylaw is changed.
Right. So it really doesn't, you know, support that infill development, division of infill development because you would have a flag lot and there will be, there couldn't be any further subdivision unless there is a road from McMillan Drive, a public road from McMillan Drive, right?
Well, the definition of infill development is you take an empty lot and put a dwelling on it, which is what would happen here. So you're infilling that currently empty lot. If you were to do it again, that's you doing it twice. It's still infill development whether it's one, two, or three times.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, yes, for the proposed lot, there is infill development, but what about the subject property, the red one, you know, will there be infill development? Because you can't, you can't further have, further subdivide that because it's a flag lot.
I'm unaware of what their intentions are for the rest of the lot. It's completely up to them what they choose to do.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. I'll go ahead, Lee.
I just want to go back to the main, the sewer main that's under the driveway that they're proposing to come in. Has anyone checked with Water Department as to what the status is or what they, so if you have a main break, what happens to the road? Like, you know, do they dig it up? Are the people locked in there? I think there's a few answers. We do a lot of sewer and water for the city of Charlestown. And I think, I think that that's probably a bad idea to have a, to have a main sewer underneath a roadway. Usually, they don't, they'll tell you it's not a problem until it is a problem. And then you end up digging up the road. And, I mean, you know, you could be, cars could be locked in there for two or three days. The McMillan, the McMillan way is the way to go. So I don't think I'd be supporting this the way it is now.
Thank you for that, Lee. Does any, oh, Jackie, do you have any questions for the planning staff or for myself?
I do have one question that may be a question for planning staff. I was wondering, would the applicant be able to seek out an easement through property 77824 as a way to sort of extend the driveway into the proposed lot without having to go through a subdivision process?
Great question, Jackie. Brandon?
No, the reason being, if you were to come from this end and you put the lot, say, here, it becomes a landlocked parcel. It has no legal right or access to a roadway. So the only way you could do it off of McMillan Crescent was, say, you split this down the middle and consolidate it with that would be the only way you could get the driveway. And it would, it would probably go through the same process as we just did. It would still be a flag lot, just the driveway would be in a different spot.
Thanks for that. So Brandon.
I do.
Oh, go ahead, Jackie. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, you go ahead.
No, you should because your thoughts are probably different than mine because I'm moving on to something else. So you go ahead.
Well, I was just going to voice how I feel a little bit conflicted over this decision because in one case, I agree with Counselor Beck about how locating the driveway off of Oak Drive does impact the adjacent properties. But at the same time, the proposed lot, like, this, like, this flag lot, this driveway is also the applicant's property to use how they wish. And so I just, I feel like I'm in the middle on this decision and just wanted to, just wanted to voice that.
Thanks for that, Jackie. Brandon, so in this situation, because the applicant has another option, this would not be a no to infill development because there's still another option. It's just not an option that they choose to want to use to explore. Is that the idea?
Well, no matter what they choose to do, it's going to have to be a variance. So they could have a ton of options in their hands, it's just whether it gets approved or not. So in that sense, yes, there are other options, but to them, this was their most ideal outcome.
Okay, thanks for that. Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
Can you just repeat again? Did you say that once I say, called the proposed lot there, once that, if that were to go ahead at any point in time, either now with access off Oak Drive or later with access off McMillan, that the rest of 390401 cannot be developed? Did I hear you correctly? That it can't be further subdivided at that point? Can you just confirm that for me so I understood?
Yep, so.
Or clarify?
Section 48.12.3, if you go down to part C, it says only one flag lot will be permitted per parent parcel. So this whole thing in red is the parent parcel. You subdivide this and make the flag lot, you cannot subdivide this again unless you were to change the bylaw.
Okay.
Yep. Correct, yeah.
Great. Okay, well, thank you for that. So lots of great conversation around this. So the Planning and Heritage Department has encouraged Planning Board to recommend to council to, that the following major variance for the subject property at 14 Oak be approved. So that's the planning staff's recommendation. What would Planning Board like to do and what is their recommendation to council? That's the resolution we need to put on the floor to head to council with. Do you want to approve?
I'll put it on the floor. I mean, if you want to get it on the floor, I'll put it on the floor.
Well, no, you don't have to put this on the floor. You can put anything you want on the floor. You can put, that you, you can, you can create any lingo you want. You can say that you'd like to put on the floor that you don't support staff's recommendation, or you can say that you do. Yep.
So I'd put on a motion that we do not support staff's recommendation on this matter.
All right. And so that was moved by Counselor Beck to not support staff's recommendation and seconded by Bobby Kenny. So the, so the recommendation from Planning Board to not accept staff's recommendation is on the floor. Does anyone have any questions based on the recommendation? Go ahead, Lee.
Could we have deferred this until further? Could we have deferred this until further discussion on it? Or maybe a revisit of the?
We can. Yeah, we absolutely can. But right now, we have, we have a resolution on the floor. So we'll have to deal with that first, I think. Do we not? Or can we play backsies?
You can cancel the resolution too and bring up a new resolution. I'm just asking if that would be feasible to do something like that.
Sure.
And we do have some, there's some things here that we didn't get a chance to go through.
Sure.
Also, I think, I think what I'm saying is I think a little more time on this might straighten a few things out. Maybe in that time of deferral, the, the Taylors may be contacted and ask if they are willing to do a different, a different route for that drive.
Okay, thanks for that, Lee. Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
I'm just trying, I don't disagree with them coming back with something else if they've got. But not this. So I guess if we, I guess a question. If we, if we reject council's recommendation, can they decide themselves to revamp their idea and proposal and come back with a different proposal? I'm not sure how that works.
So I can, I can answer that.
Sure.
So if this board does not accept staff's recommendation, it still goes on to council. So once council makes the decision, then they can't reapply for a year. So it's, it's, it's once council makes that decision, yea or nay, then, so say, say if our recommendation is to not support staff's recommendation and it moves on to council. And then if council supports Planning Board's recommendation to not support it, then they can't reapply another variance for a year. Whereas if we defer it here today, then it gives them an opportunity to look at other options. But once we move on from here, then the process has to get to its completion, unless council decides to defer.
I think it's that they can come back with a different application, but they can't come back with the same application for a year. But I'm going to let you guys clarify that point.
Yeah, so if this was rejected, they could not apply to do this again for at least a year. Say they want to use a different access, change what the lot subdivision is going to be, they're more than welcome to apply again. It's just they can't reapply for the same thing within a year.
Okay.
So I guess that being said, Counselor Beck, if you still want your?
I still want the motion to stand. And if they decide to come back with a different look, then we'll entertain that at a later time.
So again, that was moved by Counselor Beck and that was seconded by Bobby Kenny. And so, does anyone else have any discussion on this? If not, all those in favor of rejecting staff's recommendation? All those in favor of that? Jackie?
I'm in favor. Thank you.
Okay, so that was a unanimous. And now that will move on to council Tuesday evening for council's decision. So thank you for that. Thank you, folks, for coming in. Okay, next item on the agenda is 48082 Queen Street. And this is a request for a major variance to prevent a reduced minimum yard, rear yard setback. And Laurel Palmer Thompson, our Planner Three, is here to present the application. Thank you.
This is an application for major variance to the property located at 480 to 482 Queen Street, PID number 371203. This is the subject property right here. The property is a medium-density residential R3T zone, which requires a minimum rear yard setback of 24.6 feet. And the requested variance is to decrease the minimum rear yard setback as required in the R3T zone from 24.6 feet to approximately 14.4 feet. The property is bounded to the north by R2 Low Density Residential Zone Properties and R3 Medium Density Residential Zone Properties. So to the north. To the east by R2 West Low Density Residential Zone Properties. And farther east, MUC Mixed Use Corridor Zone Properties along University Avenue. To the south by Newland Crescent, right here. And with R2 and R3 Zone Properties. And west with R2 Low Density, to the west with R2 Low Density Residential Zone Properties along both sides of Queen Street. So right here. This neighborhood tends to be low-density, one to two units and three-unit legal non-conforming dwellings with a mix of R3 Medium Density sprinkled throughout the neighborhood. Property is immediately abutting. The subject property consists of low-density single and two-unit dwellings on the north and east side. And the property is within close walking distance to shopping and elementary school in Parkland. So for background, the property was approved to be rezoned in 2003. And from Low Density Residential R2 Zone to Medium Density Residential R3T Zone. And that was rezoned to construct an addition to convert the existing two-unit semi-detached dwelling to a four-unit townhouse. According to the bylaw, the front lot line for the property, it's currently located along Newland Crescent, so right here. And the bylaw defines the narrowest portion of the lot as the frontage. However, the building physically faces Queen Street with the back of the dwelling facing an interior property boundary. So currently, the existing building is facing Queen Street here. And then this is the rear yard. The owners plan to subdivide each unit to have its own street frontage along Queen Street. And this will create a rear yard setback of the existing building to be less than the minimum required yard. And the applicant has requested that the addition generally follow the same established rear yard setback. The existing building, it's setback 15.3 feet to the rear property boundary and the addition is proposed to be setback 14.4 feet. So the existing addition is right here, or the existing building is here with the setback. And then the new addition would be here with a 14.4-foot setback. So after construction, each unit on the property, it's required to be subdivided individually. So each unit meets the frontage requirement set out in the bylaw. So this building would be split in two and then the addition would be split in two, with all of them having front doors towards Queen Street. The definition for lot frontage in the bylaw, it states that in the case of corner lots, the lot frontage is the shorter of the two frontages. So Newland Crescent, as I stated earlier, it only has 75 feet of property frontage along Newland Crescent. And the frontage along Newland Crescent, it doesn't meet the bylaw because 80 feet is required for a four-unit townhouse lot. And so this is why each unit has to be subdivided individually off Queen Street and that's to meet the bylaw requirement. Because semi, or each unit would require approximately 20 feet of frontage. So given that the entrance to the existing proposed units face Queen Street, it's appropriate that the yard abutting Queen Street be deemed as the front yard and the property is a corner lot. It has 9,147.6 feet, square feet of assessed acreage in size. And the bylaw requires 2,368.1 square feet for a townhouse unit on the corner lot. And for each additional unit, it would be 2,099 square feet. So the unit on the corner requires 2,368 square feet. And then as you go inwards, the 2,099 square feet is required. So the property under the R3T zone, it does have enough lot area to support the four-unit density. Four parking spaces are required for the building. It currently has two on Newland Crescent. And the other two would be off, driveways off of Queen Street facing at the front of the building. So legislative requirements pursuant to Section 3.93, major variances of the zoning and development bylaw, notice to Planning Board, notice of the Planning Board meeting regarding the requested variances was sent to owners of the properties located within 328 feet of the subject property, asking for their comments either for or against. The deadline to submit written comments was 12:00 PM on Tuesday, March 19, 2024. There was one letter of support received and I did put that on your desk. So it was very brief. It was just basically, I support this application. But other than that, we didn't receive any other responses. So in the report, I've outlined various sections of the official plan that would support the proposal. It's staff's opinion that the proposal has merit and meets many of the policies of the official plan that supports appropriate infill development within an existing neighborhood. And therefore, staff are recommending for approval of this variance request. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, thank you for that, Laurel. So we, we approved this, it was just last year, from a duplex to a four-unit, right?
Yeah, so, yes.
Yep.
Yes, Madam Chair. So you're correct, we did approve a rezoning. And at that time, we, we basically knew that it was going to be four units that we're going to put an addition on. What happened, we did discover when we went to issue the building permit that when we reversed the yards, we were actually technically, and according to the bylaw, we were short. So even though the rear yard had 15.5 feet for the existing dwelling, when we switched the lot around from Newland Crescent, because their rear yard would have been north, the north portion of the lot, quite similar to what Brandon had earlier. Just going to flip to this. So originally, this would have been the rear yard and this was considered the side yard, even though the building faced Queen Street. This was considered the frontage. But when we put the addition on, all these units have to face Queen Street and they do physically face Queen Street. So this becomes the rear yard and that's why we had to go through the variance process. So it's a bit of a technicality, but it, in order to meet the bylaw, we had to take it through to the board.
So that's why we're here today?
That's why we're here today.
Oh, so we're not here because now they want to take the four and sell them off individually? Were they always planning to do that?
They were always planning to do that. And that's, that was discussed in the rezoning application last year.
Okay, so this is really just a housekeeping?
Essentially, yeah.
Great. No, thank you for that clarification. Any questions?
I move that we support staff recommendation for approval.
Give me a second.
Okay, move by Counselor McCabe and seconded by Counselor Beck. Any questions on the resolution? Nope. All those in favor of supporting staff's recommendation? Okay, Jackie?
I'm in favor. Thank you.
Great, okay. Well, that was unanimous. Thank you very much for that. So we have one item left on our agenda today. And that is 199 Grafton Street. And our manager, David Gundam, is here, manager of development planning, to present this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll just forewarn that I may be speaking for a time here because this is a long report with a long presentation. There's a lot, lot to it. I just want to note before I begin, a couple of corrections that should have been done to our report. So on page 42 of the agenda, that's page six of our report, our report noted that the, it was on March 1st that notice was sent to property owners. That should read actually as March the 4th, not March the 1st. And then subsequently, on page 48 of the agenda, which is page 12 of our report, we note that with respect to property located adjacent to the subject property at 129131 Hillsborough Street, that a notification letter was sent to the owner of this property asking for comment and that no response was received. We did receive a response from that resident and a copy of that letter was provided, hard copy, to each of the members on your desk today. So that, that letter was missed in our report, but it was received in time for the deadline for public circulation and response. And a copy of that letter has been provided to members tonight in consideration of the application. So to begin, this is an application for a site-specific exemption under the zoning bylaws, well as an amendment to the official plan that regards property located at 199 Grafton Street, 156 Prince Street, being PID number 342790. It's a request for site-specific exemption to Sections 30.2 and 30.3 of the zoning and development bylaw, as well as a proposed amendment to Section 4.2.3 of the city's official plan. The intent of the application is to permit an eight-story, 158-unit apartment building that would be located on the subject property, shown here and has highlighted in black. The property is located within the 500 lot area of the city of Charlottetown official plan. It's also within the downtown mixed-use neighborhood zone of the zoning and development bylaw and is designated as downtown mixed-use neighborhood in the city's official plan. The next slide is a site plan that was provided by the applicant's APM, APM commercial. So this illustrates the proposed building footprints for the eight-story building, apartment building, shown here. Included in this would be an eight-foot, eight-foot-deep stepback that would apply to the seventh and eighth stories of the frontage of the building facing towards Prince Street to the west. So the building is proposed at eight stories, as highlighted here. It would drop down to two stories at the rear for an elevated parking garage that would face towards Hillsborough Street. And there would be points of ingress and egress into the, into the parking area, both onto Hillsborough Street as well as onto Prince Street to the west. And the red dotted line details the extents of the property boundaries for the site. So this is considered a, an interior, a center lot within the center of the block. The next few slides provide building elevation illustrations. As Planning Board is aware, this development proposal for this site was approved back in 2021 for a height of six stories for an apartment building. So these next few slides illustrate the contrast between these two development proposals for the site. The images on the right are for the new proposal at an eight-story height. And again, this illustrates the stepback, eight-foot stepback along the seventh and eighth stories shown here. This is a view looking, facing east, or facing west, rather, towards Prince Street, but looking east from the perspective of an observer. Next slide, this is a view looking from the intersection, looking to the northeast from the intersection of Prince Street and Grafton Street. That's to the southwest. And this is a view from the intersection of Prince Street and Kent Street to the northwest of the site. And view looking west from Hillsborough Street on the opposite side. And again, there would be an entrance into the elevated parking garage as well as for the underground parking for the, for the proposed development off of Hillsborough Street shown here. So this proposal did go through the design review process, being in the 500 lot area. It did trigger a design review under the zoning and development bylaw. In, back in January of this year, recommendations from the third-party design reviewer were forwarded to the design review board. The design reviewer recommended approval of the design with consideration to the following recommendations that regarded mass and scale, roofs and material finishes. Out of these recommendations, the design review board endorsed the recommendation that regarded mass and scale with respect to the angular plane for the, for the building. The zoning and development bylaw requires a 45-degree angular plane along that portion of the building that would face west towards Prince Street. The design reviewer recommended a compromising 70-degree angular plane. And this is the recommendation that the design review board endorsed at their meeting on January the 15th. There were additional design suggestions made by the design reviewer that regarded cornice details for the roofs as well as material finishes for the exterior cladding of the building. But these considerations were not endorsed through a resolution of the design review board. And I will note that because there was a difference between the entirety of the considerations put forward by the designer viewer and what was actually adopted by designer review board, the council had to endorse the recommendation of designer review board, which they did, which only regarded the consideration for the compromising angular plane of 70 degrees. So to summarize the exemption request under the zoning and development bylaw, the exemption would be to the existing app- would be to the existing approved bonus height that was approved in two thousand and twenty-one to achieve an equivalent building height of eight stories. The previous approval granted a maximum permitted building height of seventy point four feet, or twenty-one point four or five meters. The current request is to increase this existing maximum permission to achieve a building height of approximately eighty-eight feet, or twenty-six point eight two meters, to achieve an equivalent of eight stories. The request would therefore increase the maximum permitted building height by an additional seventeen point six feet, or five point three six meters. Additionally, the site-specific exemption request with respect to the zoning bylaw would seek to exempt the site from the requirement under section thirty point three point two point C sub three, to not step back the building along the seventh and eighth stories using a forty-five-degree angular plane, but instead to apply a step back along these upper stories to achieve the equivalent of a seventy-degree angular plane, which is one of the, which is the recommendation of designer review board that was confirmed by council through resolution. Lastly, the last piece of relief that's being requested here is an amendment to the city's official plan pertaining to section four point two point three. Section four point two point three, under the downtown mixed-use neighborhood designation, states the following, that the downtown mixed-use neighborhood areas generally provide a transition between predominantly residential uses in the downtown neighborhood designation areas that would be found to the west of the site, or sorry, rather, to the east of the site, and the more intense and larger-scale buildings that are associated with the downtown Main Street and core area designations which are found to the west of the site. Although uses in the downtown mixed-use neighborhood areas may be more transitional in nature, the prevailing residential character of the built form should remain intact. The official plan amendment request is therefore seeking relief from the requirements of section four point two point three, that buildings in the land use designation that applies to the site are to remain transitional in nature with respect to their immediate surroundings as it regards built scale. And the next slide illustrates, this is the official plan land use designation map. The star on the map indicates the location of the subject property. This brown or dark gray area shown here that the subject property is within is the downtown mixed-use neighborhood zone. The downtown neighborhood zone is shown in light pink here that wraps around the downtown to the east and the south, and the core area and downtown Main Street land use designations are shown here to the west in, in dark and light red. So again, the intent of the official, current official plan policies are that this gray or brown area shown here is to act as a transition area between the core to the west and the lower-density downtown neighborhood areas to the east in terms of building massing and built form. Next few slides show the proposed building elevations in a two-D perspective. So these are the perspectives of the building, proposed building elevations that would face east and west towards Hillsborough Street and Prince Street. And the next slide shows the proposed building elevations that would face north towards Kent Street and south towards Grafton Street. And this very clearly shows the eight-foot step back that has been recommended by the designer review board, confirmed by a council, that would apply to seventh and eighth stories facing west towards Prince Street. And again, there's only a two-story elevation immediately directed towards Hillsborough Street to, to the, to the east, and quite, quite a generous step back from that two-story elevation until you hit the remainder of the building that's more interior to the site, going up the entire eight-story elevation. With regard to our legislative requirements under the zoning and development bylaw for public circulation, as per section three point ten point four of the zoning and development bylaw, on February twenty-seventh, city council approved a request to proceed to public consultation. On March the fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, a written notification was sent to all property owners located within one hundred meters of the subject property. A total of ninety-two letters were sent to residents to advise them of the public meeting, to request their response and comments to the application. Public meeting was then held at seven PM on Monday, March the eleventh, to allow the applicants an opportunity to present the proposal, and for members of council and local residents to be afforded opportunity to speak and ask questions concerning the development. To date, four written responses were received following the public meeting. The written responses all expressed opposition to the proposal. So the follow-up next few slides, I'll just summarize the feedback from the public meeting first, and then following that, the feedback from the written comments that were received. At the public meeting that was held March eleventh, I'll start with comments that were provided in support by local residents. Local residents expressed, in their opinion, that the project is very important, will provide housing at a time when the housing situation in the city is at a crisis level. The project has great aesthetics, has been well-designed, and will provide expanded parking in the downtown, as well as it will bring new residents into the downtown who will further support and benefit local businesses in the immediate area. With respect to height, there are other buildings in the area that are in the range of six to eight stories already. Charlestown is a change, is changing as a city, and this project will not degrade the heritage value of downtown Charlestown, given its location in the downtown and on the site itself, as well as the present use of the site as a surface parking lot, which is underutilized. So that was comments and support that were provided at the public meeting. Comments in opposition that were provided at the public meeting from local residents, concerns regarding the height of the proposed building into relation, in relation to other buildings in the downtown and five hundred lot area. There is a stark transition against other surrounding buildings when it comes to height. The proposed development seems to be too large for the site, will dominate the skyline, and for that reason, council should not approve the request. With regard to written feedback, or sorry, staff, our staff response to the concerns that were raised at the public meeting, staff note that within two hundred and fifty meters or a three-minute walk of the subject property, there are located four existing buildings which have either greater or comparable height to the proposed height of the development, these being the Holman Grand Hotel, which has a height of ten stories or thirty-nine meters, located at one, two, three Grafton Street. The existing Poli Clinic Building, which bounds the proposed development site to the south, has a height of five stories. There also exists the BDC Building, having a height of seven stories at one nineteen Kent Street, as well as the National Bank Building, having a height of six stories at one thirty-six Kent Street. Given the collective proximity to each other and the subject property, the aggregate heights and massing of these existing buildings can be said to be of a similar nature and scale, such that it can be argued that a local impact with respect to height and appearance on the city of Charlestown skyline and the general vicinity has already been established. It is noted that the Holman Grand specifically was voted in favor, being established by council through a site-specific exon, zoning exemption, to allow for increased height in two thousand and seven, when at the time the current official plan was in force and effect as it is today. Although I will note a caveat to those comments, in that the Holman Grand is within a different land use designation from the subject property, which is being considered for development at the present time. So now, the written responses that we received were four letters and/or emails received by the planning department, all expressing opposition to the proposed development. And just summarizing, providing a general summary of those comments, proposed building is too high, will disrupt the pattern of decreasing height from the downtown core. The profile of the building will dominate and disrupt the skyline, is too big for the location. No sightline or view plane analysis has been done. Concerns were expressed in the written comments regarding public safety for pedestrians due to the proposed layout, public question around public benefit with respect to the affordable housing unit count, question around garbage collection logistics and dedicated area for service access into the building. The resident at one twenty-nine, one thirty-one Hillsborough Street, who borders the site to the south, provided a written comment that they feel they will be severely impacted by shadows at eight stories versus six stories, and expressed concern also for wind tunnel and downdraft effects. It was also expressed by another resident that Clark Street, Clark Street will be made dangerous for vehicles and pedestrians due to the development. Concerns were also expressed about snow clearance through Clark Street. And lastly, the last major concern that was expressed was that a building at eight stories for this location would set a precedent, given the existing zoning, and impact the heritage value of the downtown. Staff response to these written comments that were received, I'll note that the proposed building is not within a protected view corridor, and therefore, no analysis was required in this respect. The existing official plan with regard to wind or shadow analysis does not have any hard requirements that compel the need for completion of a wind or shadow study for taller buildings in the downtown mixed-use neighborhood zone. Addressing the public benefit for affordable units, this will be confirmed through a future development agreement. I'll note for members of planning board that the residence at one twenty-nine, one thirty-one Hillsborough Street is located to the south of the proposed development, and therefore, would not be as directly affected by shadow impacts for much of the day, given its location to the south, that it would still maintain that southern exposure to the sun. Public works and previous comments that were received by the planning department confirm that snow-clearing operations can still be achieved along Clark Street should the development proceed. The proposed development will not compel the need for the demolition of any existing buildings or structures that possess any identified or potential heritage value. The existing site is comprised currently of an open-air, ground-level parking lot. And lastly, while the proposed height of eight stories could be, could be perceived as setting a precedent for height in the downtown mixed-use neighborhood zone exclusively, looking more broadly, it would not be precedent-setting with respect to taller building heights in the wider downtown area of Charlestown, as there do exist taller buildings currently, which have already been established for a number of years. Expanding on this, and this is contained in our, our staff report, planning staff are of the opinion that the requested relief through the proposed site-specific exemption request and accompanying official plan amendment do maintain the intent and purpose of the official plan, as well as the intended purpose of the zoning and development bylaw as they apply to the subject property. The proposed development and the positive impacts that it would have on the downtown from a housing supply and economic perspective have been found to be supportive of the wider public interest. The development has also been found to be overall consistent with good planning principles from a community benefit and impacts perspective. So to work towards our summary and conclusion and recommendation, again, the effect of the site-specific exemption to the zoning and development bylaw would be as follows: exemption to exceed maximum bonus height of eighteen point five meters, as otherwise required by section thirty point three point two A of the zoning and development bylaw, for a total building height of twenty-six point eight meters, with total height above bonus height to be eight point three meters; exemption from section thirty point three point two C sub three, to not step back the building along the seventh and eighth stories facing west towards Prince Street along a forty-five-degree angular plane, but instead to step back these stories a distance of eight feet along a seventy-degree angular plane. The request for site-specific exemption would also otherwise uphold and transfer to the eight-story development proposal the prior-approved lot width, flange yard, and side yard variances that were previously approved in two thousand and twenty-one for the existing six-story concept. And the effect of the official, proposed official plan amendment would be as follows: to recognize the proposed height, scale, and massing of the one hundred and fifty-eight-unit apartment building, having a maximum height of twenty-six point eight meters, eighty-eight feet, as being transitional in nature with respect to section four point two point three of the official plan that concerns the downtown mixed-use neighborhood designation as it applies to the subject property. So in summary, staff's recommendation to the board this evening is that Planning Heritage Department encourages planning board to recommend to council to approve the request for site-specific exemption to section thirty point two, Regulations for Permitted Uses, and to section thirty point three, Bonus Height Development Standards of the Downtown Mixed-Use Neighborhood Zone of the Zoning and Development bylaw, as well as an amendment to the City of Charlestown Official Plan, section four point two point three, to allow for the construction of an eight-story, one hundred and fifty-eight-unit apartment building that would include thirty-two affordable housing units with parking located within and under the building at one ninety-nine Grafton Street, one fifty-six Prince Street, PID number three, four, two, seven, nine, zero. And my apologies for the long presentation, and I'll turn it back over to the chair to help answer any questions members may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that, David. Any questions? Counsel McCabe, and then Counsel Beck.
Thank you. It's not really a question, it's more a comment. But just to say, yes, it was very detailed. But I think that we know that this project's been through the wringer for a long time, and I don't think there was too many stones left unturned with, with the detailed report and clear explanation that you provided. So I thank you for that, and I still look forward to this project proceeding.
Counsel Beck, thank you for that.
Dave, can you go back there? I've just, there, one question is kind of really, can you go back to that map that showed the, you differentiated downtown mixed-use neighborhood? Yep. What's to the, so to the west of that is the downtown core. The, oh, yeah, so you get the star, to the west in that dark red, that's downtown core. To the north, go up, yep, that yellow, what's that yellow area?
Oh, sorry, my mic was off there. Through the chair, Counselor Beck, that's medium, medium-density neighborhood. So this is a different land use designation than the downtown neighborhood designation to the east here, but it, it...
Right where your, right where your cursor, is that the northern part of the five hundred lots, right there?
Correct. So where, that white line there, that road, that's Houston, that's Houston Street.
Okay, good, thank you. So where's Queen, go on to Queen Street for a sec? I'm just trying to understand something.
Yeah. I believe...
Further west, isn't it?
This is Prince Street, so this would be Queen right here.
Okay. What's that pinkish? What's that? What zone's that?
So that's a land use designation for, so that's downtown Main Street, and the deep, the deep red is downtown core.
Deep red's downtown core.
Yeah, and, and the lighter color that's nearby, that's adjacent, that's downtown Main Street. So those are differentiated...
Okay, wow.
Designations, yeah.
Thank you. I have a, I want to go back to the precedence. It was, it was mentioned as a concern with the project. Can you clarify that within these, my understanding is that within any variance that we have, either in the five hundred lots or elsewhere, that each of them are decided on their own particular merits, and that because one gets applied, say this particular project gets applied, does not mean that all have to be applied because this one was approved?
Through the chair, Counselor Beck, that, that's, that's a very good question. And to be completely clear and honest about that, each individual application is judged on its own independent merits. So while one could say, while this could set a precedent, whether or not council approve this, approves this or not, if we got a future application that was challenging height on a different site, we would have to evaluate that in terms of its unique characteristics for that site. So just because, like, let's say hypothetically, this proposal is approved at eight stories for this site, and the city received a similar application, even in the same designation, just because this was confirmed approval doesn't have any bearing on our review of a future application. I say that in the same context that I did make mention of the Holman Grand and some other buildings in the area, although I'm using those as reference points for nearby scale and massing. When those buildings were approved, whenever they were approved, in the case of the Holman Grand in two thousand and seven, we had a different zoning bylaw at that time, we had the same official plan. It's a totally different land use designation, but I'm using that as context for...
Massing and scale.
For massing and scale in the general area. But we did have to look at this on a site-specific basis. Any future development proposal that's of any, in any way similar to this within the general downtown area would have to be evaluated and analyzed on its own independent merits, whether it's appropriate for the site. So we're dealing with a site here that's a surface parking lot. It's arguably an underutilized site. And truly, like, from a planning perspective, what's being proposed could be argued to be a higher and better use of that site from, from a planning perspective. So to answer the question, yes, we would have to judge any future application independent of this application, regardless of what decision was made here. That's pending, so, yep.
I appreciate the detailed answer. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Counsel Beck. Go ahead, Sin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. David, now, this may be kind of remotely... David, now, this may be kind of remotely related, but isn't Housing Accelerator Fund that was signed between the city and the federal government requires you to allow eight-story?
Through the chairs, and the Housing Accelerator Fund doesn't have any direct variant at this point in time on this particular project.
No, I agree with that, but I'm saying because, you know, there was a reference about the future, you know, land use. I'm just wondering, isn't eight-story one of the envisaged, you know, outcome of the HAF?
Yeah, through the chairs, and the half did, it provides incentive and encouragement for the city to move towards taller, higher forms of density throughout the entire city, but especially for the downtown core. We have to play catch-up right now to update our policies and our zoning bylaw to satisfy the requirements of half. That's in the near future, we were not there yet. So, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but it could be that within a year's time, we may not be having to sit here to have this conversation about this development proposal at this particular site, because eight stories might be permitted as of right within a wider area in the downtown. That's just pure speculation, but half is prompting us to go in that direction. Currently, it has no variant on this particular development from an evaluation or regulations perspective, so.
No, I agree with that, but, you know, the reason I was asking that question was to relate it to one of the comments that this is changing the, you know, the downtown. The reality is that it is going to change, you know, one way or the other.
And through, through the chairs, and that, that's very fair and likely very accurate, that this could be, represent the leading edge of something that's not yet here, right, in terms of regulatory permissions, but again, that's just pure speculation, and we're doing, the reason we're here today is because we have restrictions that we currently still have to deal with, and whether they're there tomorrow may not be the case because, partially possibly because of half.
No, I understand, and, and, you know, decisions are based on current, you know, regulations in place, not on the prospective regulations, but when looking at the planning aspect, you do have to envisage, you know, have certain contingency which might happen and likely to happen in some cases. No, I appreciate your answers here. Thanks, David.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Does anyone else? Jackie, do you have any questions?
I don't know. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a recommendation from the Planning and Heritage Department to encourage the planning board to recommend to council to approve this site-specific exemption. So does anybody, okay, moved by Sin, seconded by Lee. Any questions on resolution? So all those in favor of moving this on to council, accepting staff's recommendation? Jackie?
I'm in favor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That's unanimous then. Thank you, folks, for that. So the last item on the agenda, is there any, any new business? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.